Hello Tribe, I want to thank you for clicking here. This is a guided breathwork session that you can find in my Patreon club, The Breath Club. If you join the Patreon club, you get access to my complete catalog of guided breathwork sessions. There's over 100 guided sessions there using beautiful music from different composers and a variety of techniques that I put together to put you in a different state, depending on what state you'd like to be in. There's long sessions, there's short sessions, it just depends on what you're looking for. There's over 100 different sessions that are on there now, and we add to it every single month. In addition to that, you get access to the monthly Zoom, where I guide people from all over the world in a group breathwork session. We have other perks with other tiers, and you get special discounts that nobody else gets. I'd also like to thank our sponsor, Magic Mind, for sponsoring this video. Magic Mind is an all-in-one nootropic blend that I use every single day to help put me at my best whenever I'm functioning mentally and physically. So, without any further ado, enjoy the session. Here we are, out in nature. I want you to close your eyes and feel it. Feel that cool humidity. A little bit on your skin, you can feel the... The water in the air as it brushes off the rocks. Our natural habitat is nature. Let's go there within ourselves. This is a long session. Don't feel like you have to do the whole session all at once, but the whole goal of this is to really, really allow ourselves to sink into our natural state, to refresh, and to become new. Lie down or sit down, close your eyes, relax your eyebrows, relax your forehead, your shoulders, your chest, your abdomen, your thighs, your hips, your calves, and your feet. And prepare to go on a breathwork journey next to the mountain streams. We're gonna begin with God breath. These breaths will be the longest breaths that you can take. Starting with God breath, in through the belly, up through the ribs, to the chest, and just relax it slowly, slowly, as you can. You are in no hurry. You are relaxed. Just breathe into that relaxation now. Slow as time itself. Slow it down. The slowest inhale you can take, and the slowest exhale. Just let it happen. Just breathe. Nice and slow. Now we're gonna pick up the pace to six-six breath. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, out. Two, three, four. 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 In, two, out, two. In, two, out, two. In, two, out, two. Come on, all the way in. Two, out, two. In, 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 two, out, two. Now, as fast as we can, we call it doggy breath. Here we go. All the way in. Relax it out. And now ever so slowly, ever so gently, return to nature, into the God breath. Slowly as you can, let that air into your nose, filling the belly, the ribs, and the chest, and as slowly as you can, relax it out. These breaths are at the pace of time. Ancient stones, the old forest around us. Slow and relaxed. Luxurious breaths. And now we begin cadence breathing. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, out. Two, three, four. 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 In, two, out, two. 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 All the way in. Two, out, two. In, 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 two, out, two. Now, dog breath. Keep going, keep going. Dog breath, all the way through. Keep going. All the way in. And just relax it out. Back to God's breath. Slow, slow breathing. All the way in. Slow, luxurious breaths. Slow. As slow as possible. Just bask in this beauty. Coming into cadence breathing again. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, out. Two, three, four. 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 In, two, three, four, out. Three, four. In, two, out, two. 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 All the way in. Two, out, two. In, 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 two, out, two. Now, dog breath. All the way in. And relax it out as slowly as you can. And if you don't want to breathe, you don't have to. You can just stay on a neutral lung apnea, that's fine. But now it's time for God breath. The slowest, most luxurious breaths you can take. Just drink in this beautiful thing we have called life. Celebrate this beautiful mystery, this miracle that we live in. And with eyes closed and a relaxed body and mind, connect with nature. The same nature that's within you. Same nature we can find out there. Coming into cadence breathing again. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, out. Two, three, four. 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 In, two, three, four, out. Three, four. In, two, out, two. 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 All the way in. Two, out, two. In, 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 two, out, two. In... In, two, out, two. 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 Now dog breath. All the way in. And relax it out as slowly as you can. Back into god breath. Or a neutral lung apnea, whichever you prefer. In god breath, we try to, with our breathing, emulate the infinite amount of time. The universe is constantly expanding. And here we are tucked away in this little miracle called earth. Let every breath be a celebration of this miracle. Slowly inhale. Enjoying every bit of this breath. And slowly exhale. Relaxing your mind and body. Coming into cadence breathing again. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, out. Two, three, four, 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 in. Two, three, four, out. Three, four, in. Two, out, two. In, two, out, two. In, two, out, two. In, two, out, two. In, two, out, two. All the way in. Two, out, two. In, 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 two, out, two. Now dog breath. All the way in. And relax it out as slowly as you can. Finding our place in the bliss with god breath. Slow luxurious inhalations. Long relaxed exhalations. Breathing in this nature. Feeling it all around us because it's within us. Something we carry around with us everywhere we go. That connection. Slowest breaths in and the slowest breaths out. Emulating the infinity of time. Coming into cadence breathing again. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, out. Two, three, four, 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 in. Two, three, four, out. Three, four, in. Two, out, two. In, two, out, two. In, two, out, two. In, two, out, two. In, two, out, two. All the way in. Two, out, two. In, 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 two, out, two. Now dog breath. All the way in. And relax it out as slowly as you can. Go back into god breathing. Or you can just have a neutral lung apnea. That's fine too. Just relax. Bathe in the bliss of the here and now. Feel the warm hug of nature. Imanating from inside you. Reaching out to the cosmos. Coming into cadence breathing again. In, two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, five, six, out. Two, three, four, five, six, in. Two, three, four, out. Two, three, four, 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 in. Two, three, four, out. Two, three, four. Two, three, four. In, two, three, four, out. 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 Three, four. In, two, out. Two, in. Two, out. Two, in. Two, out. Two, in. Two, out. Two, in. Two, out. Two, all the way in. Two, out. Two, 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 now dog breath. All the way in. And relax it out as slowly as you can. Now you have the choice to go back into normal breathing. To have a neutral lung apnea. Or to take as many God breaths as you like. Feel the cool mountain breeze. The spray from the rivers, the creeks. Embask in the miracle of the now. This beautiful thing that is existence. This beautiful miracle that you walk around in every day. Maybe give yourself a hug. You deserve it. There's about six more minutes left in this track. Plenty of time to relax, to meditate. To practice gratitude. Just to be present. Enjoy.